So, thank you. Wonderful. So, resuming. We've got a mic down. We're resuming town meeting at Article 17.
I was never a pole dancer, so I don't know. Thank you.
Yes. Do we have a motion on for Article 17? Coming up. Article 17 is a citizen's petition, as we can all read and see, and anyone can make a motion.
Monica Ryan, District 6, I make a motion that Article 17, as it is written here, is, I move that we pass this or discuss this article. Is that right?
Article 17, thank you both, so moved and seconded, and we will have discussion.
So, I'd like to say that I'm totally in favor of this. I've always been in favor of this. I feel that the representative form of government in the town of Lee does not serve us very well, especially when it comes to important decisions that are, can be contentious. The open town meeting form of government is used for towns of small occupancy inhabitants, and we are actually below the threshold of the number of residents that you need to have representative form of government right now, and we have been under that threshold for many years. So, I really feel that for all the citizens of Lee, that it is important that we give everybody a voice at the annual town meeting on an equal level. It's the only democratic way to act.
Ms. Ryan, while you're there, if you wouldn't mind, just as a formality, since you're standing there, would you read us that article?
Yes.
So, I should have asked you before.
Thank you. I move that the town.
To see if, I think, yes.
To see if the town will vote yes to return to the open town meeting format of government so that all inhabitants of the town of Lee, quote, "may have a say in their futures or take any action relative thereto." One person may vote.
Okay, thank you very much, and that was, we had that seconded? Yes? Okay, and next, thank you.
Caroline Young, District 3, I have been asked to amend that item as follows, to see if the town of Lee will vote to comply with the Constitution of the Commonwealth, which provides that towns with fewer than 6,000 inhabitants must have an open town meeting and to adopt open rule procedures with a new charter under MGL Title VII, Chapter 43B, Section 1 through 20. An open town meeting means that every town's voters may vote on all matters, one person, one vote.
Mrs. Young, thank you. Do you have that in writing?
Ms.
I'm sorry, Ms., do you have that in writing, perchance?
Yes, I do.
And if you could bring it.
Certainly.
Forward. So, if you can just give us one moment to process that. So, on Ms. Young's motion to amend, right now, I'm asking, looking for, do we have a second? Okay, fair enough, just please, one moment. And this now will be discussion on the amendment only?
My question is, why do we need the amendment or the article at all if that law for Massachusetts applies? And so, that's for the.
That's a power question. I don't know if it's rhetorical, honestly, I don't think it is, right? I understand.
By the way, Josh Bloom, District 5, it's a totally legitimate question. Why, why do we need this if the law says otherwise?
Thank you.
It's a great question.
Yes.
The representative form of government in Lee is legal, and in any event, that amendment would so far exceed the citizen petition, the article that's published in the warrant and be out of order anyways, if it, if that was ever adopted.
Wait a minute, wait, I have something.
Yeah, what the, what the motion to amend is, is something completely different than was published in the article.
No, it's not.
Okay, then do what you want with it, it's, go for it.
Thank you, Attorney Pollard, I appreciate that.
Can I talk, please?
And we will continue discussion right now only on the amendment, and if, if.
I was waiting for you to finish.
Yes, no, go, go right ahead, go right ahead, please.
Diane Westweiser, District 2, Jeremiah, can you tell us what would happen if the town reps accept that amendment?
I don't think anything would happen. The, in fact, the citizen petition doesn't do, it's not worded the way you'd want it. What you'd want is to move the town to petition the legislature to change our special act that has a representative form of town meeting. That's the act that creates this. The rest is gobbledygook.
Hi.
Yes.
Andrea Wadsworth, District 3, two years ago, we had a charter commission, and the committee was formed by appointment by the select board. Can they break a recommendation to change the special charter because they were, they were charged to work on the charter of the town?
Thank you, Ms. Wadsworth.
So, I think the technical answer to that is that the commission has already issued its final report. However, it's now in the selectmen's hands to place those recommendations or other recommendations on the town meeting warrant. Looking, Jeremiah, does that sound?
Thank you, and Ms. Riccio, I'd like to.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, I recognize you, thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm the person who went and got the original petition signed and put before, in time for the town warrant, the article for town warrant, but someone said to me, "Well, it doesn't take, doesn't tell you what to do." So, that's why I wrote this this way, so it basically says the same thing, it just gives us guidance on how we can go through the procedure to do this, you know, setting up a commission, and there's 20 steps that is involved with going through the MGL, MGL Title VII and Chapter 43B. It tells you how to go ahead and set things up. So, once, if the town approves this, and we go to, they say, "Okay, we, we want to go to open town meeting," we can't just, like, drop everything, you know, we have this system here, we need to set it up and, and put together a charter that we can propose. So, maybe this isn't exactly the right steps, but it gives you the guidance of how to set up a new, a different charter, and that's why I have these 1 through 20 steps, and there's a, I have a whole booklet on it, tells you how to do it, and there's this whole book on, on what to do, no, that's the town annual report, but anyway, I, I looked up the MGLC laws, and I was told that you can't just put this out there, there's no guidance of what steps to take in order to execute this.
Right, right.
And that's why I wanted those 1 through 20 steps and refer to that, in that particular chapter, so.
Okay, thank you, and just, I know it's getting a little late, but just friendly reminder, we are still debating or discussing, if you will, the, the motion to amend. Yes, please?
Janice Castanero Pram, I think I'm District 4, I think you all should look into this because of people that live in this town want to be able to vote. We pay taxes, we should have our voices heard, because, I'm not saying, a lot of the reps really listen to you, but some don't, and they don't vote the way we want to vote, so I want to have my voice heard. If I'm paying taxes in this town, working in this town, I want to hear my voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
That's a tough act to follow. Jim Castanero, District 1, yeah, I did your homework for you. I've been a representative for, I think, 36, 37 years now, and the biggest complaint I heard in the last 36, 7, 37 years is that people want to vote, one, one vote, one person. I mean, we're the only, I think, maybe Adams, if they still doing it, I don't know, we're the only town in Massachusetts that does this. There's five towns, okay, okay. How many? Are there really that many? I didn't, I heard there was two, so, but the biggest complaint I hear is people want their vote, and I, you know, I don't blame them.
Well taken, thank you. Yes, Mr. Cody?
John Cody, District 3, I think the original question in the amendment is kind of getting confused, but I'm going to give you what I got, anyway. I became a representative over 25 years ago, and one of the main reasons I became representative was to do away with a town rep form of government. I have to admit that it didn't take me long to see the benefit of a town rep form of government. Over the years, I've seen a lot of dedicated townspeople serve as town representatives, people that dedicate the time and effort to research the issues and articles that the town faces each year. I know I try to research and understand town issues and try to serve my district and the town of Lee to the best of my abilities. One thing I also know is that no matter how long and grueling a meeting can be, at the end of the night, the reps are still there to the sometimes bitter end. It is not our place to be interested, to be interested or address only one or two contentious issues or articles and then leave the meeting. We're, we're there to deal with all the town's business. Any resident in a district can run against a sitting representative or fill a vacancy in a district as they are, are usually openings. A good representative listens to all the people in their district and weighs their concerns, and as I said, there are avenues to replace your reps if you don't feel they are properly representing you. By the way, I hardly hear from constituents unless there's a hot button issue, and even then, it's few and far between.
Thank you.
Deidra Consolati, District 5, I, 33 years ago, became a rep in order to have a voice, and it was Charlotte Davis, the legendary Charlotte Davis, who was the first one to say to me, "We have to do away with the representative system," and that was 33 years ago, and we've mounted campaigns, we've brought the article, brought things to the municipal ballot, we made motions on the floor, and, and all to no avail, it is time to go back to one vote, one person, one vote.
Thank you. Further discussion to the gentleman in the back? Yes?
Yes, again, I'm Bill Matthews from 54 High Street.
And, and this is, you're speaking to the amendment, correct?
Yeah, I am, to the extent that it is my belief that the idea of having a representative form of government is clearly a violation of the Constitution of the Commonwealth, that the Commonwealth's Constitution says that, that towns of less than 6,000 residents must have an open town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And if I can just say right now, if there's, again, the hour's getting late, so if there's no further debate on the amendment, we could open it up to voting on the amendment now. I don't want to cut anyone short. So, is there any further discussion on the amendment only?
Well, to me, it kind of refers to both, anyway, just what I had to say.
Fair enough.
Okay, so I believe that this was adopted in our town in 1967? Eight, it was? Okay, and that was because people weren't showing up to meetings, people were not being involved, other than, like John pointed out, a hotspot issue, but today, it's changed. We have the internet, we have a lot more people involved in our town politics than we have in the past, there's been changes at the helm, and I think people are very interested in participating, having transparency, and I think one of the key things to do is to, to get rid of this form of government at this point and see what happens, and if we ever get to the point again where people don't show up, then people are going to end up voting to have the district reps put back in, anyway, so I think we should give it a try.
Couldn't hear you, couldn't hear you, Patty. One moment, please, and we will do so.
I, I don't know if that's true. What'd she say?
Yes, please.
So, this is just a technical question in terms of how it's written on this, in the warrant.
Is this on the amendment?
It goes with it, sort of, because it's in both.
And can, I'm sorry, can you speak up? Thank you.
I think it goes in both of them. It, it says, "One person may vote," but my question is, should it not say one vote per person?
One, one moment, please, and we will look at the language in the, in both. And, and so, on the main article, we're going to go with how it was submitted, what you see in front of you.
Well, technically, would it not have to say that, though, if we did change, if we did vote on that? What does the amendment say?
I know, so, let's go back to the amendment, if we could, for just one, one second, and yes, and I think there is a, if we. Yeah, okay, the lights are on, right, good, because I can't see anything anymore. That's good, this is helpful, and, and the town clerk, thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney, I believe, you know, when you go to open town meeting, one person, one vote, that's implied, so I think it's redundant, if you, I don't, I don't think you would need to repeat that in there, that's how open town meeting works, so.
Okay, I just had to make sure, thank you. Great, so, yes.
I just wanted to, I, I know I proposed, you know, we proposed this, the citizen petition, but what I want to say is that I've been trying to become a rep for seven, over seven years, okay, and in my district, it's really locked up, it's very difficult to be a rep. I'm in District 4, and I've been involved with the politics and coming to town meetings for a long time, and I can't get in because it's locked up, and I can't say that for every other district, but I can say it for mine, and I never will get a voice on this floor unless it's one person, one vote, and I think the way this town has been handled through transparency has been very difficult to come through, you know, I mean, I've wanted to volunteer on things and have not been accepted. I have a good education, I have good ideas, and I am blocked, and I think that if we open it up to one person, one vote, there would be more respect for every citizen in this town, not just the reps. It's, it's appalling to me to think that, I live in a democracy where I have no say in my own town. I really, I really feel that way.
Thank you.
And a lot of people feel that way, and the people who are continuing to be in the representative system, even though people say, "We don't want it anymore," are, just want to hold on to their power. I, I'm, I mean, I'm, no, I, that's how I feel, that's how I feel, and I, I think a lot of people feel that way, so, and it's time to move forward and let everyone have a voice, not just certain people.
Thank you, thank you, and I think we will open it up now, and I think it is time to, to vote first on the amendment, and. Okay. Yes, yes. I will read it to you, the amendment. Yes, thank you. Okay. So, this is, this is what we'll vote on now, this is the motion to amend Article 17 to, as follows, "To see if the town of Lee will vote to comply with the Constitution of the Commonwealth, which provides that towns with fewer than 6,000 inhabitants must have an open town meeting and to adopt home rule procedures with a new charter under Mass. General Law Title VII, Chapter 43B, Sections 1 through 20. An open town meeting means that every town's voters may vote on all matters, one person, one vote, parenthetically noted." So, all in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your hands and/or use your clickers and click yes. Oh, you have to use a clicker? Okay, and raise your hand. It's like the sun has come back out, the lights are great. The vote is coming in, thank you for your patience. Oh, and I'm sorry, yes, and I'm sorry, if you're opposed, you can vote, you can click no, you can raise your hand if you'd like, you can abstain, thank you. Yes, and, and the vote will be closing in three, two, one. And the amendment passes by one vote. That's just the amendment, right? So, the amendment. So, now, we will go back to the main motion as amended. Technology is great, isn't it? So, we have 21, again, on the amendment who voted in favor, 20 voted against, and four abstentions. Sidebar math. Okay, so now, we will vote on Article 17 as amended. Okay, so, okay, so we are now ready to vote, all in favor? I'm sorry, just, yes. May I say something? I'm sorry, yes. Cindy Mathias, yes. Cindy Mathias, 60, Marida. Just to show you how this district rep doesn't work, one person tonight abstained from every single vote, so how is he representing anybody in this town? Four people just decided to abstain. If they are not using their power to listen to the citizens of Lee, this needs to be dismantled immediately. Everybody deserves their voice. I don't need to beg, borrow, and steal from, from representatives of my district that don't listen to my voice. Yes, please.
So, my question is, on this, what we're going to vote on next, will this just mean that there will be a vote, if we say yes, that then there will be a vote, a town-wide vote, of whether we want to change the government to be, from district to town meeting? Is that what this is saying? What is it saying?
So, the question is, if, if this main motion is voted in favor, i.e. approved, will this go beyond the citizen's position, petition vote here tonight? Please bear with me. Yes, and, and this may take a minute.
All right, so, what I said before hasn't changed.
If you said it again.
Okay, I'll say it again. The article was put forth by the citizen petition, didn't contemplate adopting a new charter, it talked about returning to, to open town meeting, or two different things. I get that, but what you do here has to be published in the warrant, so, as I said, it's out of order. My opinion hasn't changed. You may not have listened to it, you disagree with it, but that's my opinion, this came here tonight, so I'm doing my best with it. You can disagree with it, you can stand your feet, you know, but that's still my opinion.
I am, I apologize, I apologize, but I'm still not understanding what you're saying, so I would like to have a vote that I understand. This is very important. Could you explain it again so I can understand, please? I really, no, I'm not, I'm really not understanding, this is a big decision that I'm voting on.
Hi, time for trouble.
I voted to abstain in the amendment because of what you had said, that you basically seemed to indicate that you're going to tank the, the, this, this provision.
I'm not tanking anything, I guess if someone was listening, they would have imagined the article.
Right, so, right, so the article hasn't been closed yet, so what I'm going to ask you is, can you help us with, can you help us with language that will make this passable?
I'll do my best.
I think what may be difficult to understand is that the difference between a citizen's position and an item on the warrant, I think that's what people are missing and not understanding, there's a difference between those two things.
Yeah, the citizen petition is just as effective as an item on the warrant, you can put it anywhere on the warrant and signatures for a town meeting, but what you can't do is see what's on a published warrant, so this charter, it may be a great idea, but you got it on the warrant, it's not. So, what you have is citizen petition to return to open, to open town meeting or have a government, and I think the amendment to that, if you want to do that, is simple. What you do is, you want to see if the town will vote to petition the legislature to return Lee to an open town meeting or a government, the statute of rights of legislation, that's what you need. legislation, that's what you need.
First of all, I have a question. Mr. Pollard, I understand you're the town's attorney. Does that mean that you are the attorney for the whole town, or are you attorney for the board?
Excuse me. I didn't catch you.
Laura Murphy, District 3.
Thank you.
And I'd like an answer for Mr. Pollard.
And your question, could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Mr. Pollard, I'd like to know if you're an attorney for the entire town or just the board? Because you're being extremely rude to the townspeople, and we might need a little guidance on how to make what we need to happen, make it happen. So how do we do that?
I don't know. You want to say it? I have no idea.
Excuse me! Is it really necessary for you to be this rude?
Yeah, it's not being rude.
You absolutely are, to a number of people here.
I'm telling you, I just told you how to amend.
I'd like to know how to get his ass fired.
Here we go.
No, here we go. You didn't answer my question yet, either. Do you work for the town or for the town board?
Yes, let's be civil, please.
See, it's really good at just hiding everything and slipping it under the thing. You did not answer my question. Do you work for the town or just the town board? Because you're making everything we're trying to accomplish very difficult.
Mr. Pollard is the town council, if that is helpful.
No, it's not. Does that include the town people? Because we would like to make some changes. We need to obviously figure out how to do that. He is not being very helpful, and I'll say it again, he's being extremely rude to another number of people who have tried to stand up and make themselves known.
The vote was definitely close on the last thing that we voted on, on the amendment, so I understand there's a lot of...
But it's still passed, and we'd like to know how to go about doing what he says we need to do to make this an open-meeting town. We all know why we want it, because we got sideswiped with something that we don't want. And we are now trying to make a difference for ourselves, because obviously, our select board does not want to help us with this. And I don't know about how everybody's lived here. I've been here over 30 years now. I've stayed out of the politics, out of the limelight, et cetera. Shaun, I didn't vote for you. I really hope they go forward...
Please, please.
Excuse me, let me finish.
Please, please.
I have a right to say what I'm saying.
Excuse me, excuse me, please, please. When you are speaking, you have to speak to the issue at hand. I would remind everyone respectfully...
The issue at hand is we are not getting the assistance that we need.
But I would remind everyone respectfully that any town member can make a motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we try and recall Shaun Rainier from his position.
That is not...
Okay, well, again, should go to a town vote?
Point of order, Mrs. Moderator.
Yes, please, please.
Point of order.
If I would like to move to Mr. Cody for one moment?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cody, please.
This is really getting uncivil, and I hate to keep doing this, but we need to move this question before this gets out of hand, and our police officers are going to have to start taking people out.
Oh, I'm sorry, was that a threat?
Excuse me?
I'm first one to go. Anybody want to come with me?
We have a...
Ridiculous.
Mr. Cody? Please, everyone, please, please, please. I beg you.
You don't have to.
We have a motion, thank you, Mr. Cody, to move the question. I think we... I just want to double-check and make sure I understand what is happening to my right.
Can I speak against the call to question? I'm about to offer an amendment that will make the language...
But Mr. Bloom, respectfully, yes, thank you, just...
Does he have a second?
I know, I'm trying to keep track. So Mr. Pollard is... Everyone, can I, please, let's all take a deep breath, and we will...
Ms. Moderator, may I speak?
We do have a motion in front of us right at the moment, so if you can hold...
Sure.
Yes, we do have to vote. I'm calling the question, which is not debatable, it's a two-thirds vote, so... And we can do it with the clickers.
And stand.
So... Yes, I know, there's just, I'm trying to, listening to things on both sides here. Okay, yes, yes, thank you, that does help. I was trying to be patient. Yes, yes, I understand, thank you.
So we can't just call the question when we don't have it.
Right, thank you.
I see that to do what you're trying to do, you want to put, if you want to move to amend Article 17, to add the following language after, to see if the town... the town will vote yes, to petition the legislature to return to the open town meeting format.
Why do we have to petition the legislature?
Because that's, we operate with a special act.
That's the process. So yes, Mr. Bloom.
Yes, that is my motion.
Okay, so just to keep up, we, Mr. Cody made a motion, and I believe is withdrawn. Miss, I recognize now, Mr. Bloom, would you please read that? Would you please read it back, so we are all clear on what we're voting? Thank you.
If I get this language wrong, please help me correct myself.
Okay, thank you.
The amendment would be to see if the town will vote yes to...
Move to amend Article 17.
To amend Article 17, to add the following language, after to see if the town will vote yes, to petition the legislature.
So that's language being added, to petition the legislature.
We're adding the term, adding the phrase, after to vote yes, to petition the legislature.
Okay, so... So we had a motion that was so moved and now seconded, and I think we should vote on the motion to... Ms. Wadsworth, seconded, and we will now vote on this motion to amend.
Can we have discussion first, before we vote?
Yes, yes, we, yes.
I guess I want to be clear, is this vote, that this body is going to petition the legislature, or is this to ask the town at a meeting to petition the legis... to put this on... Right?
If you vote yes, as I read this, I'm doing this all on the top now, you're going to get rid of the representative of the town meeting. We're going to have to ask the legislature to draft legislation to take that out of our control.
Right. So we will not be asking the townspeople at the next town meeting, or town election in May of 2022, if this is something they want to do? We're deciding this ourselves right now.
As I understand it, and, you know, again, doing this right here without any advance notice, I don't think so, but the legislature would require a proposal. Doubt it. So the same is, I don't agree with you, I understand, but often, petition special act, the legislature will have a local approval required, along with open approval.
Thank you. Yes, Mr.... One moment, please. Yes, yes, discussion. Mr. Cody?
Just for a point of clarification, what does a previous amendment, how does this affect that? There was already a previous amendment.
So the secondary amendment would need to substitute this language, replace that with the original article that had that petition. That should be the motion, otherwise, doesn't make any sense.
So what you're saying, just to be clear again, is that...
Just a little closer to the mic, thank you.
What you're saying is that this, if we vote yes for this amendment, with how it's written, that we are deciding then again for the town versus having a town-wide vote?
It's, yes, what we're voting on momentarily is Mr. Bloom's amendment. Yes, please.
Lisa Sloan, District 2, and I'm sure this, not everybody will see this favorably, and you cannot vote for me next time around as a district rep. I am, I feel like because not everybody in the whole town realized that this would be a vote about this tonight, I'd prefer to see it on, personally, on the ballot, and therefore, I'm going to oppose it. While I do not necessarily oppose the action, I feel like the process should be through ballot.
Thank you.
Monica Ryan, District 6. I've been working on this for years. I've met with Smitty Pignatelli, Ben Downing, when he was there, everybody about this topic. The only way that this could be done is for the reps to vote it. It would never, it can never be done by a town-wide vote. It's already been explained to me by the legislators. And the way it has to be done is for the reps to make the vote back to the form of government. And yes, it does have to go back to the legislature, they have to, you know, draft it, and they might ask for a town vote as part of it, but the only way the process starts and gets done is for the reps to make that vote. It's the only way legally it can be done, just letting you know.
Okay, so let... Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one point of information, we, there could be a non-binding referendum, which would just be surveying the public opinion, but that would be the only thing that could be on a ballot.
The only thing we need to do here right now is just what Monica says, is we, the reps, need to vote ourselves out of office. That's what we're doing. Okay? We're doing this right now.
I think that might be the highly irregular part of it. Ms. Byron?
Hey, Byron, District 5. We did have a non-binding referendum...
Just a little closer.
Sorry. We did have a non-binding referendum. I don't remember the year, and the people voted to get away with the representative form of government. It was brought up, I think, three or four times since I've been doing this, and each time, the reps voted not to go along with it and not to get out of office. This time, it may or may not be different, depending on what is happening, but Monica's correct on this. We've researched this, we've put it on the ballot three, four times, I'd say in the last 20 years, and it has always failed when it got to the reps. So we'll see.
Okay, so here's your chance to vote yourself out. It is 9:17 PM, and you have your clickers. If you would like to vote in favor of Mr. Bloom's amendment, please click "yes," you can raise your hand. And if you'll just be patient, if you would like to, if you are opposed to this amendment, you would obviously vote "no." And of course, there is the option to abstain.
How about the no people, raise your hand, so that people behind you can see. Did you get that on camera?
I will read you the vote in just a moment. So the motion to amend passes 25 in favor, 19 opposed with one abstention. So that vote is closed, and we will now return to the main motion. Okay. So we will now be voting on Article 17. Okay.
It's not two-thirds?
It is, it is not two-thirds, no. So if you are in favor of Article 17, you may raise your hand, you may click "yes." And if you are opposed, you may click "no," and you may raise your hand now. The vote is going to close, so if you have not voted, now would be that time. A yes vote is a yes click, a no vote is a no click.
Yes.
Okay, so, this is, okay, all right, and the vote is closing in three, two, one. And that vote is in favor, 23 opposed, 21 with one abstention. Okay, so that brings us now to Article 18. Mr. Donovan?
Motion to pass over 18 to 22.
Okay, there's a motion to pass over Articles 18 to 22. Is there a second? I heard several seconds. And now there may, if there is discussion, this is now on Mr. Donovan's motion to pass over. Yes?
I am in total disagreement. I mean, this is, this is why we vote...
You want to be a rep, stay here.
To get open-town meeting government, to just...
I'm fighting for us.
Say that you want to pass over such an important...
It's now a done deal.
Such an important thing is ridiculous. I mean, this is an important issue, and to just pass over it is an absurd decision. I'm not for that.
Yes, please.
Chiana Castanero-Bray, 35 Church Street, Lee. You kept us here all night. Bucky wants to be a representative, tell him to represent us. You need to listen to us. These are petitions, I didn't put them on here, but I think we need to listen to us.
Thank you, Ms. Castanero.
This is the problem with this town. Nobody cares about anybody but themselves. Start caring about people. And your neighbors, what's the matter with you?
Thank you, Ms. Castanero. Yes, please.
Cornelia Calle, District 4. I agree that these are on the warrant, and we should definitely... I agree that these are on the warrant, and I think we need to stay. We've been here very long, we're cold, but we need to stay to finish this out. Thank you.
All right, so let's vote on the motion to pass over Articles 18 through 22. We all know how... Okay, the voting is open. You can vote "yes" if you're in favor of passing over, and you would click "no" if you are opposed to passing over. Yes, so that motion fa... Yes, so that motion fails. The, those in favor, ten. Those opposed, thirty-four. No abstentions. Article 18. Is there a motion? And there's, is there a second? And the, and I, I'm sorry, who moved? And would you mind reading it? Thank you.
I did not put this on the warrant, but I will read it. All right, where are we? To see if the town will vote to amend bylaw 172-1 as follows. Chapter 172, solid and hazardous waste substances. Article 1, radioactive and hazardous waste substances. Amendment to 172-1 prohibited uses. Quote, "No land with any use, district in the town of Lee may be used for the storage, burial, incineration, or disposal of EPA classified radioactive or hazardous waste substances, including but not limited to waste substances classified by EPA as low-level radioactive and/or hazardous waste substance found on EPA website." 172-3 definitions, hazardous waste substances, EPA website for hazardous waste, and then the whole thing there.
Thank you. Thank you. And that was seconded? Yes. And if there's any discussion, Ms. Castanero?
Yes, I think we should all vote for this. Great Barrington was smart and put that on their warrant. Let's be just as smart as Great Barrington. Come on, vote this in.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Pete Sorrentino, District 5. If you look into this article, a little bit stronger than what it says, you're going to put a lot of businesses out of business in the town of Lee because I'm a business owner in town. By this article, the way it's written, the way it's said, I cannot store wastewater, or waste oil on my property the way this is. So if we want to do this, we got to find a different way to do it because you're going to put the mills out of business, you're going to put a lot of garages out of business. You got to really look into this one article. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Doherty?
Hi. I did work at the oncology office up here for many, for a few years. I've come to, from Westchester County. I worked at Westchester Medical Center in the oncology-hematology office. I have never seen as much cancer in Jersey or in Westchester as I did here. And then I found out why. And I had good friends, parents from GE and the Mills that came as patients from Lee, and I found out from friends why. You can't keep doing this to Lee. I didn't come here because it was, I was rich. I was not. We, my husband and I, my husband works for the Marion Fathers. He actually runs it now. He runs it. And I ended up making less, a lot less here. It's not about money for us. It was about moving to God's country, which I really thought I was coming to. I did not know about this garbage that they were putting in the ground and giving to their employees for a hundred, seventy-five or a hundred years. Don't do it!
Thank you, Mrs. Doherty.
Don't!
Appreciate your, your comment.
Please, I know what I'm talking about. It's not about politics. It's about the health of our children and us.
Thank you. Mr. Cody?
Yeah, John Cody from District 3. I guess this may be best answered by the town attorney. Does this have any effect on any state or federal agencies, being a by, a local bylaw? Are they be holding to it?
Thank you.
One more thing?
Yes.
I think we should amend it. I didn't know this was going to hurt Mike Sorrentino. I don't want to hurt anybody. But I think we should amend it to no PCBs put in our town.
Okay.
Cornelia Calas, what I really feel is, not just about PCBs, but any hazardous waste in town should, we should be really careful. So if, if the GE situation, if we do win that first, for example, then other companies could come in and do something similar. So we do need to protect our town, but we have to be careful how we do it and have the proper language. I don't know that language. I need advice about whether this language is protecting, like Great Barrington did. They put that in quickly to protect the town overall over the years. So I need advice from town council and the select board of whether this article is then protecting us in general. I don't know enough. Again, I would need advice on this. I do want to protect our town from PCBs, from other hazardous waste that's really toxic to our town, and I think we need a bylaw for that, but I don't know if this is doing that. Thank you.
As it reads, sorry, Anne Langless, District 2. As it reads, I agree with Mike Sorrentino. I'm sorry, Pete. So it's going to affect every business that has any opportunity to store waste oil. It's any auto mechanics, body place, anybody who does that kind of work. This had a nice thought to it, but I don't think it's properly worded, and I think it's going to hurt too many other businesses. So unless it's amended, I want to vote it down.
Select Board Chair Cardlino.
Thank you.
Could I just say that everybody understands? Nobody comes to us to ask for help with this decision. So it's really the way that it is. I agree that everybody has this, which I don't want to hurt these folks in town. It's not personal at this point. Maybe we want to pass it over, pass it off with our own bylaw, and put it on, if we have another special coming.
Excuse me, can I, I wrote this. Can I talk about it?
Sure.
Can we amend it at this point to just say PCBs and then work on it? Because I certainly wouldn't want to hurt any business in town. I know that they, they store things. It's temporarily anyway. It's not there forever. But if the way it's written prohibits them from doing their business, I know that they have it stored properly. This was really meant to prevent dumps, okay, and landfills. And so if it needs to be changed or tweaked later, then we should do that. But right now, I would like to just amend it to say PCBs.
So I would respectfully request, if you're making a motion to amend, that you put that in writing as soon as possible and...
Cross everything out and just add PCBs where it says hazardous waste.
We still need it in writing. And, and yes, I think the town clerk is going to try to work that. Do, it was, so, is there a second?
Radioactive in there because the town already had that part.
Come again?
The town already had a bylaw regarding radioactive waste. This is the only thing that I added to it was a hazardous. So if we could just call it out to PCBs wherever it says hazardous, that would solve the problem.
Noted. Thank you. So we have a motion to amend. I did not hear a second. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second. So now we have to speak only to the motion to amend, if that's your point. Thank you.
Suzie Harding, District 2, and I think that this is important policy and legislation, and that doing it on the fly at nine o'clock at night on the football field is perhaps not the best way. So although I support the spirit, I do not support the amendment or the article at this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, we really need to get that in writing because a bylaw change has to go to approval for the Attorney General, and I don't see that flying if we're, unless we have everything very specifically worded. So I would just suggest a quick recess to do that, or maybe nobody leaves their seats, but a second to do that, and get the minutes correct.
We have a beautiful moon. This will take several minutes. Okay, thank you for your patience. We have the wording for the amended, the amendment.
Thanks for your patience. We just wanted to pull up the actual bylaw. I'll read it, and then if a town rep could make just a, just an affirmative, so moved, it would be to amend to strike the words, all of the words in there that say hazardous waste substances and substitute it with the words PCBs.
So it's so moved by?
Anne Langless.
Anne Langless, yes.
Move if you have a second.
Okay. Shall we vote now on the amendment as just read? Okay, so we're all clear on what just happened. All in favor of the motion to amend. You can raise your hand, click "Yes." And all opposed, you can also raise your hand and click "No," or you may abstain. And, and that motion to amend passes with thirty-five in favor, five opposed, and five abstentions. Yes, and that, so that brings us back now to the main motion, Article 18, as amended. All in favor, if we can, yes, raise your hand if you're in favor of Article 18 as amended, and click "Yes." Should you be opposed, click "No." You may raise your hand. We're just taking in the numbers. The vote will close. And it looks like Article 18 carries. Thirty in favor, six opposed, four abstentions. I'm sorry, eight, I can't say, eight opposed, four abstentions. And that brings us to Article 19. Ms. Langless will read Article 19.
Article 19. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from the sum of $50,000 or any amount, other amount, to train citizen scientists in the best practice for independently measuring, monitoring, and reporting levels of PCBs in the town of Lee as a baseline before removal from the Houston River and environs as a part of the GE EPA Rest of River Settlement Agreement, and to commit to the town to support the continuance of such as training programs and the associated cost of monitoring kits as long as there are significant quantities of PCBs present anywhere in town.
So moved. Is there a second? And there's been a second. Is there any discussion, sir?
Yeah, I would just like to say that, um...
Please tell us who you are observing.
My name is Timothy Gray.
Thank you.
165 Bradley Street. And I would like to say that citizen scientists are for PCBs? Or it's a joke. You got to have a PhD to understand this kind of stuff, for the most part, or you're going to be like me that worked on it for 40 years. And for you to think citizen scientists are going to do anything, you know, you're living in fantasy.
Thank you. Mr. Cody?
Yeah, John Cody, District Rep. 3. I support this petition in principle and believe we should also invest in third-party monitoring if and when it comes, when that time comes. I can only hope that we don't give up a right for oversight. I think that we should consider that we tabled this article in such a time that we have more clarification after several pending lawsuits have finally worked, worked through the process. This could become a mute point at this point in time.
Thank you.
Jim Castanero, District 1. I think I'm making a motion, we table this amendment because there's never going to be a dump in my backyard as long as I live, and I'm going to be living until 102 years old. And I'm going to be living until one hundred and two years old.
So, I think... Mr. Castignaro, could you rephrase that?
I make a motion to table?
Yeah.
Postpone indefinitely?
I'll just... Yeah, postpone it.
Okay, so we have a second... Okay, we now have a motion to postpone indefinitely Article nineteen, which has been seconded. And, sir, I don't know if you just arrived at the mic...
I was... I was here at the mic some time ago, and I was the author of this article.
Go ahead.
Yes. I'm Bill Matthews, resident of Fifty-four High Street, District Two, author of warrant Article nineteen. This article was introduced last year as well. But due to the very late hour, which it is now again, it was not given proper consideration. The article presumes that the dredging and dumping proceeds along the lines of the EPA permit. It's not something that I prefer to see happen, but it makes that assumption. A half-billion-dollar engineering project of this kind is a honey pot for corruption. By systematically tilting the PCB measurements, GE subcontractors can easily save GE additional millions at our expense. The central idea here is that there should be an independent watchdog to validate those measurements. If the statistics are manipulated to put more than the allowed PCBs in the upland dump, it's the citizens of Lee who will be the ultimate losers. I have chosen the citizen-scientist model because it is a well-known tradition officially recognized by the EPA and might receive funding support from EPA's established citizen science programs. Adopting this article will send an unmistakable message that the town intends to carefully scrutinize critical aspects of project performance. It is a prudent exercise in risk avoidance. I've taken note of the comment made last year that this is not the time for the town to take this step, that it is too soon. I emphatically disagree. Instead, indeed, the town is five or ten years too late in making its wishes known through many actions like this. GE and EPA will suffocate us while we waste our time ponderously debating our next move. However, an amendment changing the scope of this article would not be improper, so long as it maintains the proper... The principle of independent oversight. For example, by changing a few words, this could instead be an effort aimed at planning how to best organize and fund the oversight activity. As such, an amount of twenty-five thousand rather than fifty thousand might be more appropriate. Let's be mindful that twenty-five thousand is one-tenth of one percent of the twenty-five million Lee is supposed to receive in compensation. In other words, the article would set aside one thousand... One one-thousandth of the compensation amount to plan how to defend against a significant risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Thank you very much. We do need to vote on the motion to postpone indefinitely. That was seconded. So if we can vote on that now, that question to postpone indefinitely Article nineteen, you can click, you can raise if you're in favor of postponing indefinitely. And you can click and raise if you are opposed to postponing indefinitely. So... That... That motion to postpone has carried thirty-one in favor of postponing, ten opposed, and three abstentions, which means we will now move on to Article twenty.
All right, which one... Article...
This is a motion on Article twenty.
Article twenty. To see if the town will vote to insist that rail transportation be the primary mode of moving toxic PCB materials both within the Berkshires and to final destinations beyond.
Okay, there's been a second. Is there any discussion on this very, very focused short article?
Hi, Andrea Wadsworth, District Three. I just... I don't love the word insist. Can we do shall? And can Jeremiah help us figure that out? Because insist is kind of wishy-washy, and shall is a legal term.
There's a question, and there will soon be an answer. Thank you.
So in terms of this Article twenty, I don't know if it makes a difference, but shall. I mean, yes, that's correct. As a legal proposition, it's not... Insist is not a directive. Shall is. The problem is, I don't know if it's in jurisdiction to make people use the railways or the roads and have to accept them. I don't know what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Is there any further discussion on Article twenty?
David Carrington, District One. Using the railroad to transport the PCB material generated by the Rest of the River Project would take fifty thousand to one hundred thousand truckloads of PCB-laden material out of our towns and off our infrastructure. The railroad is the most efficient, least expensive way to move heavy loads long distance. It... It is on the right side of the environment. And... The railroad is ready and waiting to do it. And it's the best way for us to handle the heavy loads of debris that come out of the river on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Carrington. Appreciate it. Ms. Langlis?
Ann Langlis, District Two. So what I'd like to do is amend Article twenty to see if the town will vote to require that rail transportation be primary mode of moving toxic PCB materials both within the Berkshires and to final destinations beyond.
And we have that in writing. Wonderful. So that was a motion to amend Article twenty with one word. And our town clerk is going to set up the vote accordingly. And that was seconded, your motion. So we will now, unless there's any vote, any other further linguistic vote, or discussion, rather, we will proceed to vote on Article twenty as amended.
I'd like to speak.
I'm sorry.
I believe this should be tabled, because this whole matter is under litigation right now. And as long as the settlement has been litigated, I don't think that we should be discussing any of these details. The EPA and GE have made it very clear with all the citizen input at hearings and also in pub... In written comments that they have no interest in using the rails. This is part of the litigation. This should not be considered here. We have no real negotiating power with this. And it only makes it look like this whole dump would be more acceptable. It ignores the fact that the railways would only be taking materials up and down the river and keeping them off the roads, but it would have nothing to do with the upland dump site, which will be totally dug up. It's on the other side of the pond. The rail would have no effect on the upland dump, which we are trying to prevent. That whole area will be dug up with a pumping system or a trucking operation. So let's just table this for now. Thank you.
Appreciate your comment. We do, in fact, have... We just had a motion to amend that was seconded.
And I just want to point out, if we do win, we already have this in place. It's that simple. It's just a backup.
Let's proceed to the vote to amend Article twenty. And the voting is open. You can raise your hand if you're in favor as amended, and click yes. And you may raise your hand and click no if you are opposed to Article twenty as amended. And that passes. Thirty-five in favor, six opposed, four abstentions. So now we have to go just quickly back to the main Article twenty. As amended. And I trust there is no discussion, since that was such a tiny little amendment. So seeing no discussion, hearing no further discussion, this is now the vote on Article twenty. If you are in favor of it as amended, please raise your hand and/or click yes. And raise your hand and/or click no if you are opposed. And that motion also passes likewise. In favor, thirty-two in favor, seven opposed, and four abstentions. Bringing us up to Article twenty-one.
Just read them. Twenty-one. To see if the town will vote to place the question on the municipal election ballot that requires the Select Board to rescind Lee's approval of the Rest of River Agreement. If this cannot happen before 2022, a special election to be held.
Is there a second? Okay, so moved, so seconded. And Ms. Castignaro, you...
I think you guys should see how the people of Lee feel about this dump. You know, it should be on a ballot. I don't know who put this petition in it, but I think it's a wonderful petition. You know, we're here to support our neighbors. And if we all work together, we can fight this. And I can guarantee you, the votes will come in with no PCB dump. So support your neighbors. Take care of your neighbors and put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes, I'm... Pardon me.
Just a point of information. And again, I'm not here to speak for or against this. I've just, again, some information on the election part of it. Just so everyone knows, we don't have another election this year, so the way it was worded, we would have to hold a special election in 2021. So there should be a money amount with this. It costs about five thousand dollars to do the election. So just pointing that out, there's some money to do that. And I believe it would be a non-binding referendum. Correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Pollard, but it would be a non-binding...
Well, then, put it on 2022. Right? Does everybody agree with that? Huh?
Hi, Andrea Wadsworth, District Three. I'd like to amend this motion and add a dollar amount of five thousand dollars for a special election cost. If needed, I think you need it.
Okay. If that motion to amend, Ms. Wadsworth, is seconded, if we could get that in writing? Seconded, and the pens are writing it now? I presume? Mr. Donovan?
Point of order. Jeremiah, can you do that? Add something like that? Usually you can only take away.
Well, the article didn't have a funding source, but why couldn't it have a certain funding? I don't think you could add in preparation for the article if it had funding source. Plus, I don't think that would be...
Can I add the language that the funding come from the reserve... Finance Reserve Account? And not specify an amount?
Please hold that thought.
So the finance... I may have jumped on that a little bit, because the finance community is unforeseen costs. So I think, you know, the other amendment is probably easier to just go to the next election, right?
Yeah, then we would budget for it, but...
I don't think you can be able to do... Be able to add money to this without any money in the proposed article. If the way to save it is to amend it to go to the next available election.
I rescind my amendment and add amendment to go to the next election. Right?
Or next available election? Or next scheduled election?
Right, yes. Okay, so there's a motion to rescind. It's been seconded. Just bear with us, if you would.
We would just be striking if this could not happen before 2022, a special election be held?
Yep.
The next election would be the municipal election anyway, so that... The rest of that word.
Yes, please, please. Okay, we will be voting on this amendment momentarily. Okay, so we are good to go. I'm sorry. Are you speaking to the motion to amend?
I'm speaking to the rescinding of the agreement for the PCB dump. You guys are speaking of the rescinding on the agreement, and I just wanted to comment on that. Should I wait?
Yes, please, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to vote on Article twenty-one as amended. And... I'm sorry. Yes, we're voting on Article twenty-one as amended. On the amendment. On the amendment. I misspoke. So if you are in favor, yes, and I think we... I think that would be helpful.
The amendment would be to strike the words, "If this cannot happen before 2022, a special election be held." And we would be inserting at the next municipal election.
So just cross out the last sentence. And we would add our makeup provision for a possible special election. So if you are in favor of that, please click yes. Raise your hand. And if you are opposed, click no. And if you are opposed, click no, raise your hand. And the amendment passes. We, looks like we have thirty-six in favor, four opposed, and three abstentions. So. And now we will, right. So now we're, yes, we will go to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if, please tell us who you are.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks.
My name is Rochelle Walker. Currently, I live on Husetonic Street. Shortly to be living on Olive Street.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. This is, yes, I'm sorry. You can restart.
Thank you. My name's Rochelle Walker. I currently live on Husetonic Street, soon to be Olive Street. Sorry, this is a bit long, but please bear with me. Thank you to Patty, Sean, and Bob for serving this town to the best of your ability. Despite some very apparent criticism, I hope you know that a lot of us still do appreciate you, respect you, and support you. Lee is a community made up of people with many personal connections to each other, which on occasion can be unfortunate. But overall, it is what makes Lee a special place. Bob and I have never met, but his mother-in-law was my grandmother's lifelong very best friend, which means his wife's family and my father's family go way back. I know that he has answered the call for many people to become a selectman, mainly so that he can stop the PCB dump. I wish him all the best in the effort to do so, but I hope he is prepared to contribute to Lee in other ways as well. I am hopeful that he will do his best. Sean and I have been friends for most of our lives. We went through school together, played sports, and enjoyed our post-high school years with a wonderful group of friends that will most likely stay in this town forever. I fully trust and believe he has the people of Lee's best interest in his heart. Patty and I have never had a conversation, but I know all of her children and grandchildren. The Carlinos are a wonderful family, and I think it is safe to say they reflect her integrity and character. Patty has served this town for well over 20 years, and I've never heard a negative thing about her until this agreement was final. She has done so much good for this town, and I truly believe she still has a lot more to contribute. I will continue to trust that the very difficult decisions that she has had to make were with the people of Lee's best interest at heart. My point in mentioning these personal connections is that if you can make them, it is much easier to see, understand, and trust that these people are not the enemies. They are not GE, and they are not the EPA. They are fellow Lee citizens who want to make sure that we are left with the best possible outcome to this awful situation. If we continue to fight against this Select Board and the town rescinds on, and the town rescinds on the agreement, then what? Do we somehow convince everyone else in the agreement to rescind as well? Do we go through years of litigation and potentially lose to GE only to end up with a dump which we will have no control over? Do we really have the financial resources to take on this legal battle against a multi-billion dollar corporation that could very well put us in a much worse situation than we are already in? I truly believe our best chance at stopping this dump would be if everyone put all their energy and donations toward the HRI's legal battle against the EPA. If the HRI loses, the town of Lee has nothing more to lose than we already have. If they win, then there is a much better chance of GE remediating the river the way they should, which is not include a PCB dump in anybody's neighborhood.
Ms. Walker?
Yep. The last thing, I just want to close with, the last thing that Lee needs is a PCB dump. The second to last thing that Lee needs is a PCB dump and a Select Board full of people who only had one mission. Thank you for your time and be well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On the article. Thank you. As amended, yes, yeah. Mr. Cody.
I thank the previous speaker for what she said. Obviously, a lot of thought went into it. John Cody from District Three. Obviously, I've been following this situation for quite a while, some years. From what I understand about the river agreement, just so everybody's on the same page, there were 12 stakeholders that were at the table for the mediation of the Rest of the River Agreement. I don't know if you know all the players, but I'm going to say them anyway. EPA, GE, Five Towns, City of Pittsfield, State of Connecticut, Massachusetts Audubon, Berkshire Environmental Action Team, and a group of citizens from Pittsfield represented by C. Jeffrey Cook, and the Husetonic River Initiative, who do, who, excuse me, who did not sign onto the agreement. Therefore, I believe HRI, Tim Gray's group, is the best, is in the best position and has the best chance for success to stop or nullify the Rest of the River Agreement. Forcing the selectmen to rescind their approval of the Rest of the River Agreement will not automatically stop a landfill in the town of Lee, but it will give up the town's right of oversight, lose monies that can be used for oversight and compensation to the town, and quite possibly open up the town to significant legal liability from any of the other stakeholders. You don't have to tell me that this is a very contentious, personal, and emotional issue. If I had my way, we would have sent this stuff back to where it came from 40 years ago. I would like us to use knowledge and wisdom in approaching this issue. Let's not cut our nose off to spite our face. I ask that you vote down this article and give Tim Gray and his group, Husetonic River Initiative, a chance to fight this through the proper channels and let the citizen's lawsuit proceed to conclusion. We have time to revisit this article in the future, and we will undoubtedly have more information. As we all know, the legal system is not known for its speed. In the meantime, I am deeply sorry for the people that will continue to suffer from being exposed to the high levels of PCBs that are currently in the river now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's, my name's Tim Gray, 165 Bradley Street.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Folks, we need everything we can get to stop this dump. We need everything. Not just the HRI lawsuit, but everything to stop this dump. We don't want it in this town. And you better start learning that because if this town does not oppose this dump, you will have it. And this, this is a shame for the town of Lee, folks. You want to be known as the toxic center of New England? Is that what you, is that what you people are talking about? What a shame to put this on our town. What a shame to put a toxic dump to the entrance to October Mountain State Forest, our greatest state forest. That's the simplest thing here. You put a toxic dump next to the campground? What's wrong with you people? I mean, come on, people. This is our town. And you want to turn it into a toxic town? That's what you're doing? I mean, I've been here for 50 years, and I've been a good citizen. And I'm, I'm just ashamed of the town of Lee right now. You guys got to get your act together. And you're going to have this dump unless you start opposing it and doing everything you can to oppose it. And it's not good. And by the way, I've studied PCBs all my life, and they are really, really bad for you. And you breathe them because they evaporate. And we measure PCBs three miles on either side of the Husetonic River. In the tree bark. That means that if you live within three miles of the Husetonic River, you breathe it your whole life. And you want to talk about the cancers? There needs to be a major cancer study in this community, not only on people, but listen to this, on the dogs, because the dogs have been dying along the Husetonic River. This is a serious, serious health issue. And if you guys don't start to realize that, it's a shame because people are going to continue to get sick. And this dump is no good. And folks, it's on a sandpit. It's on a sandpit, a hundred, a thousand feet up from the river, right there. It's, it's just ridiculous that they even think of doing this. You know, it's not the place for a dump. We, we, we got one of the area's best geologists, and he calls it the worst place you could ever put a dump. And he's a well-respected geologist. He wrote half the, in on writing half the maps in Berkshire County. You know, and I'm really ashamed at all you people who think that a dump is going to be good for our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cornelia Calister, District Four.
Thank you.
One way that we can still have our voice heard is on Friday, there's the Rest of River Committee that is on Zoom. And you can, you can attend, everybody, to that meeting and speak your voice there because that is the committee who votes on this. I think, what time is that meeting at tomorrow? Nine thirty? Nine o'clock? It's on the town website, and you can, you can attend. I've attended some, and I speak my voice. You don't have very long, but you can. And I have to say, I was disheartened at one of the Select Board meetings when this type of, this article was voted down by the Select Board. I was disheartened. I also do agree that they were doing their best, the Select Board, at the time, with a very complicated matter with GE pressuring. It's a terrible situation, however. And so I just keep hoping that we can change things, but we'll see where it goes.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Castignaro, before you speak, I would just point out, I know we're in the home stretch, but I think we may have just broken the Stockbridge Annual Town Meetings record.
Yay!
It is 10:15, so please.
I'm up to three in the morning, but I just want to say, I, we really need to fight this dump. Come on, people. I lost a lot of friends over this dump, a lot of business over this dump. I never was this vocal in my life. It's making me sick. I'm worried about everybody. If you care about your kids, your grandkids, I'm going to be long dead in the next couple of years, so I won't even see the dump. But I do care that my son, if he has kids, I care about you people. Do you understand that? We need to do everything to fight this. You guys, this is what's wrong with this world. Nobody cares about anybody anymore. It's all about money. Or what, how's it going to benefit me? Please, people, I'm begging all of you. Please stick with this and fight this dump. You know, I just can't believe that three people can vote on a toxic dump. And you, you put out, we can vote for plastic bags. What's the, what's this world coming to? I wish, I hit the lottery. I'm going to play the lottery. And if I win the money, I will clean the DM dump up myself. And there will not be a dump. I mean, I'll clean up the river myself, sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Wattsworth.
Andrea Wattsworth, District Three. I love Janice. Madam Moderator, I support this article because as a taxpaying person in Lee, I was a cheerleading coach. And there was a little girl named Jamie Castignaro who graduated from this very building that we're standing in front of. And she will inherit the land of her father. And he will be living on the edge of a PCB dump. And so will Jamie. And that's her inheritance. And if we're not going to worry about the children and the grandchildren of the people in this football field right now, now we can all say one dump is better than three. That's tactics of major corporations trying to put fear so that you negotiate down. Stand up against the dump. We're stronger together.
Thank you.
Monica Ryan, District Six. I just agree with everything that she just said. And I am, I did receive several calls from people from District Six who are against this. So I want to just go on record as saying that I'm totally against the dump and that we should be standing up to fight it any way that we can. We should not be settling for a dump and with those scare tactics of, we don't know what could happen. We might get fines. We're getting out of the agreement. But it's just, it's the wrong idea to place a toxic dump here, anywhere in the Berkshires, not even just Lee, but anywhere in the Berkshires. I'm totally against it.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, we are still on Article 21. Yes, thank you. And, thank you. Yes, please?
Just a quick comment. Caroline Young, District Three. In terms of putting this on the ballot, on the EPA's report about this whole arrangement, they said that there was a little bit of disagreement. Yeah, maybe, yeah, a few people didn't like it. I saw every single meeting they ever held, and nobody liked it. But they're telling us, sure, there's a little bit of objection. They get it on a ballot where they can see that this town and the number of voters we have come out and say no, then at least that part of their, their little, well, it's a big, report is going to be a lie. And that's what Tim and his people need. We need to vote on this. We have to vote.
Thank you. So as, yes, let's vote then. I, I, yes. We're voting on Article 21 now as amended. If you're in favor, you will raise your hand. You will click yes. And if you are opposed, you will raise your hand and click no. I love these clickers. And that, that passes with 31 in favor, eight opposed, and four abstentions, bringing us to the last article of the evening. And I don't know if, encore, encore.
Don't know who wrote this article either. To see if the town will vote to direct that the Select Board shall initiate an executive effective action in the upcoming fiscal year designed to counter the near-term effects of unemployment, food insecurity, and financial distress resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic and the longer-term anxiety, fear, and emotional turmoil caused by the provisions of the Rest of the River Agreement. The purpose of such actions should be to restore a genuine atmosphere of harmony, concord, and civil unity to the community. The success of such actions to be reported at the 2022 town meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? There's a second. Thank you. So there is discussion, sir?
Yes, I am, Madam Moderator. I am Bill Matthews, resident of 54 High Street, District Two, author of warranted Article 22. And I have to apologize because I didn't place it last. This article is serious, and its intent to suggest a positive role for the Select Board in our recovery from the pandemic and in dealing with the divisive nature of the Rest of the River Agreement. It encourages a change in the Select Board from an almost exclusively reactive body dealing with the town's bylaws to one that has a recognizable proactive agenda. Many other towns in the Commonwealth have yearly written goals and objectives that their Select Boards are expected to accomplish, report on, and be measured by. I have in mind some fairly simple things that our Select Board could get behind. Naturally, they can make their own choice. I'll give three examples. There's a fledgling community garden on Academy Street. Gardening has well-known emotional and physical benefits for young and old. The location of this garden makes it especially convenient for seniors at Crossway Village to participate. This might be the start of a more widespread community garden activity at multiple sites. This might be the start of a more widespread community garden activity at multiple sites. Here's another. Some weeks ago, Colleen Henry from the Chamber of Commerce came before the select board for help in setting up a free downtown Wi-Fi domain. People could get consistent Wi-Fi access all the way from Lucky's Ice Cream to the outlets on the hill. This would undoubtedly help our local businesses in their pandemic recovery. Instead of being rebuffed by the board, they should have jumped at the opportunity to get right on it as part of the nationwide broadband initiatives. Finally, in the PC, if the PCB cleanup has any silver lining, it will be in the job opportunities it can provide to Lee's younger citizens. Restoration will be a significant phase after the 13 years of dredging and dumping, extending the cleanup effort to more like 20 years. The select board could work with the school committee to devise an integrated curriculum that would prepare today's school population for some of the most desirable careers available later in this century. This article is not a big ask of our town's leadership. It asks only for a modest change in its operating mode. It asks that some part of the select board's effort be devoted to forward-looking endeavors that will be of lasting benefit to the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matthews. And if there's no further discussion, let's vote on Article 22.
While everyone's voting with their clickers, remember to bring them back up to this table when you're done tonight. And the papers.
Hi, Madam Moderator. I just want to, before we adjourn, I just want to thank Chris Britton for getting us these cool clickers and for provide, you know, just making all of this happen tonight.
Thank you very much. You know, Mr. Britton told me that Joe Biden sent the clickers. So no, kidding, kidding. But, okay, so we are, we are in the middle of the final vote, and. This is the last call, last call. It was 5:00 somewhere, five hours ago. Now it's last call. Yeah, so the, the final motion fails. 16, we're 16 to 20, seven abstentions. And, and I move to dissolve the 2021 Annual Town Meeting here in Lee. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.